I will call the meeting into order. Felicity wasn't able to be here tonight, so I'm acting as chair. I'm the vice chair.
Appropriate.
So, announcements? Sure. Well, you all have kind of got the introductions, but we have two introductions tonight. We have Andrew, who is the Planning Tech and 911 Coordinator for the town. Andrew started October 1st, and he was at some of the downtown design plan meetings at a lot of them. And so, he comes to us with a lot of skills, a degree in urban planning and sustainability, and some great skills that we're looking to put to use. Are you from the area, or did you move here?
So, I went to high school in Connecticut. I guess that's where I really grew up. I was born in Seattle, went to college in Washington State, Nollingham, Washington. My family brought me back over here, and this job too, I could say. I've been looking for jobs probably for three months. It wasn't really going my way in Washington, so that's kind of when I made my way back east. But I'm here now officially a month in, so it's going well. Yep.
And you're like, so you're a department in town?
Yeah.
And you're going to become a, can he be a town meeting member and work for the planning?
You know, it's funny.
Brian's a, Brian has been, and he works for the planning department.
Yeah, and he's also a resident of the town.
Yeah, so, well, yeah, you have to be, to be a rep town meeting member.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
There's words that balance when you're a planner for the town you live in.
For, yeah.
You know, whereas...
Well, sometimes you need expert knowledge.
Yeah, right?
As a town meeting member.
That's my philosophy. I want to live in the place I plan. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's good to be here. Looking forward to working with you all.
Great. And welcome to Prudence, who is the newest planning commissioner. I'm excited. I've worked with Prudence over the years, when you were at the hospital and you were at the Department of Health, so.
Yes, yeah. I was at the Department of Health for five years. I was district director and retired last spring from that job, and then I was a BMH for most of my career.
As a nurse?
No, administrator. I was a, I was a VP for most of that time, doing physician recruitment and planning and operation stuff.
And if I could just add, Prudence works with, or volunteers with, the Brattleboro Coalition for Active Transportation. So, she brings a lot, like she said, in healthy community design, like in walking, that kind of thing. There's interest. So, anyway, did we go around? Have you, we can go around and introduce somebody else, or?
Yeah, sure. Okay.
I'm Josh.
Hi, I'm Tom.
And Kathy, of course, you can ask if you want to know something more.
Yeah, I'm sure. I didn't mean to say more. I was just going to follow.
Do you want to say like where you work, or if you work outside the home?
Yeah, I, I'm a project manager of a company.
I own a little motorcycle shop out of my house.
I've been here two years. I'm working on fixing up a house for like half a year now. I have a degree in public health, some relation to, and sciences, so.
Yeah, and I've lived in town for, I don't know, 14 years or something, and I'm currently River Stewart, and I've been on the planning commission for a long time.
Yeah.
And I have two little kids.
Oh, right. So, I got, okay. Any other announcements? Announcements? So...
I'd like to introduce myself.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Ricky Rosati, and I applied for the Sustainability Coordinator position. So, when I saw that as, there's an update on the agenda tonight, I knew I should be present.
Great. And did you want to introduce yourself to us?
I'm Mary. I just wanted to say, so.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you. So, this is an announcement. I know at one of our last meetings in September or August, we had talked about doing away with the density in certain residential districts, and a couple of weeks later, I was approached by the state. They are working with the Congress for New Urbanism, which is a national nonprofit, on a project called Zoning for Great Neighborhoods. So, they're looking to make, to find code, zoning code changes that they can make to make housing more affordable, communities more walkable and whatnot. So, they chose Brattleboro as one of the reviews they were going to do on our land use regulations, and I spent today in Montpelier. So, if I am stumbling over my words, because I spent a lot of time in the car today, I'm a little tired. But, yeah, so I had to give a presentation of where I thought some of the challenges, or where we found challenges to be in the code. And they have a couple of professionals who are going to review it and give us some feedback on that, I'm hoping within the next month. So, Felicity and I had talked in putting together the agenda that we were going to hold off on kind of finalizing the zoning amendments that we want to make and wait to get feedback on them. Two of the things that we talked about today were maximum building footprints, and also the density, as we kind of, I had mentioned, we kind of struggled with that. So, it wouldn't surprise me to see them come back with recommendations that we just get rid of maximum building footprints as well, because we have some other different controls. And then, one of the professionals also made the comment, so we have building articulation standards where like every 20 or 40 feet, you have to have a change in the facade. And she was suggesting that we probably do away with those too, because they're, what they're seeing pop up is these, she called them zebra buildings, where instead of actually changing, you know, how the building is articulated, like by bumping it out or something, they're using materials or colors to kind of create that change, and she calls them zebra buildings. So, that was interesting. I hadn't, haven't come across that before.
That'll be fun to Google later.
Yeah, no, that's what I thought. I'm looking to check the zebra buildings out.
So, it sounds like a good thing, then. It's a good opportunity.
It's a great opportunity. Pretty excited about it, so.
Even better than Google, I just learned about Ecosia as a search engine, and they plant a tree every time people search. And they don't do any ad tracking.
Can I ask, so we, the state architect came and we did that, he did that presentation on becoming a...
CLG.
Thanks. Are we, what's the process for that? Or did we decide we're going to do that? Or is that, is there still steps in that that have to occur?
There's steps that have to occur. I think we did decide we were going to do it. I had Andrew take a look at the materials as well. I think at this point, it's just getting it before the slot board. The major step is that the Design Review Committee is going to need to transition to a Historic Preservation Committee. But they're willing to do that, and we'll probably, we'll need more members with certain backgrounds and skills that they can bring to that. At least the majority of them have to have it in accordance with the law, the best we can do with that. So, so that'll be, we've been talking about moving that forward.
Okay. What is CLG?
Certified Local Government, which I don't think is the most appropriate name for the program. It really has a lot to do with like historic preservation. Yeah. Sue, you guys probably can give a better understanding of what it is.
Yeah, and I think like my takeaway from the presentation was that it, it will just enable us to have greater access to grants for historic preservation work.
But that was, that presentation was videotaped by BCTV, was it?
I believe it was. Yeah, so I'll try to find out.
You might be able to just watch it on the BCTV like, or cut.
Cool. All right. Other announcements? Okay, so then, public comments? And we have a member of the public?
A few today.
Yep.
Well, I'm curious, when you were talking about the urban design, was there any focus on making sure that new buildings provide water filtration for residents?
No.
Is that on the agenda?
It's not, because we view that more as building code, and we don't have building code in that.
That sort of thing would be regulated at the state level?
It could be.
Required or not, the water systems at the state level?
Some jurisdictions, you know, they have a building, you know, a building code or development code, like where I came from in Washington, my internship, we had one. So, we had those kind of standards, you know, for water, yeah.
So, next on the agenda is to approve the minutes of September 9. And I think Andrew just handed out comments. If there are any corrections or changes needed?
Need a couple of minutes?
Yeah, take it going. I'm going to, so you applied for, applied for a climate adaptation workshop, is there...
I did. I had not gotten an update. I thought they told me the end of October I would hear. Haven't heard anything yet. It was, it was nationally competitive, and it was a pretty simple, quick application. Still waiting to hear. Still have my fingers crossed.
Good. That's it?
Yes.
So, any changes or, do we have to make a motion to adopt it before we discuss? Is that the proper?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, September 9.
I'm going to need a second. Here. A little second, I'm sorry. Who seconded? I'm sorry?
I did.
And any discussions or changes or discrepancies, concerns? No? Okay.
Looks good to me.
So, those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Okay.
Have you been, are you actually a member?
I was staying just because I wasn't.
Yeah, she's actually a member.
Only the three of us were there.
Yeah.
But that's okay. You can still vote if you're there.
Well, you are.
She was not a, Prudence was not a member, so she should have stayed.
All right, so, yeah, so there's four in favor, and then one abstention. And then, next on the agenda is downtown design plan. So, take it away, Sue.
All right, sorry, I'm just trying to...
Are you projecting?
...the next part.
Are you projecting somewhere? Yes, we will.
So...
What we wanted to do was just have kind of a recap. It's not going to go there, Andrew. I'm just going to have it on the wall.
Oh, yeah.
But that's for the next part. Yeah, so we wanted to have a recap, because several of you were at different events with the downtown plan, whether, so there was the Better Block Challenge in September, which was the three pop-ups, which I know several of you got to see. And then, there was also the Places for People Charette in October, which some of you were at the kickoff meeting, or various events along the way, and then the recap meeting. So, I wanted to use this time to kind of talk about it, see what we thought worked, where maybe there needs to be some more work. I mean, I can kick it off, so, you know, the Better Block Challenge, I thought Friday night had the most activity, I think, going on in downtown, so the library pop-up was pretty successful. The alleyway, they only staffed theirs on Friday night, and, you know, they, they were able to put up art and the lighting and whatnot, but I don't think the impact was as great as here at the library or the bike lane on Flat Street, or Flat Street, sorry. I thought the bike lane, you know, worked out well. Prudence, you weren't there that weekend, were you?
Yeah.
It was a lot of work to set it up, but there seemed to be a lot of interest in the bike lane. They had also run a petition, and they had a lot of people sign it and were interested in seeing a permanent bike lane on Flat Street. So, if you want to jump in, we're recapping and providing thoughts and, you know, what we think needs to, you know, the work that went on.
The Better Block Challenge and the Places for People.
So, we started the Better Block Challenge, which I know you came by on Sunday.
Yeah.
We had a...
All through the, all through Main Street. Checks out all the projects, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had a booth down in the Lajus that was not a great place to be, especially Saturday. The consultant liked it because she could observe what was happening with malfunction junction, but we did not get kind of the walk-in traffic. It would have been better had we known it was going to be such a gorgeous weekend, to kind of move to table, move the table around and have been stationed at each site, for sure. It, that didn't, that wasn't like that, to have kind of a drop-in place. Josh spent some time Sunday morning as well. There were more people. We moved outside and were, you know, trying to get people to take the seat.
It was a little warmer today.
That's that question. Yeah.
I saw it Friday evening. Remember when I came by that MetroSpace? And I wondered how it was the next two days, like in the middle of the day, maybe when it wasn't in kind of that interim time like it was Friday evening, or maybe people were, some, you know, were still at work, or some were going home to get dinner, or out at dinner, or not roaming downtown yet for nightlife. Friday seemed a little that close to as far as, as far as participation to me, but I wonder how during the middle of the day, Saturday and Sunday, were...
I thought that, I know the bike lane was more successful on Saturday than on Sunday, and they did more programming on Saturday. They had the blender, they had a couple of rides, and, you know, they just seemed, it was a bit more programmed. I think there were people that didn't quite know that they were supposed to ride in that area, because it was marked off parking spaces.
Yeah, some of those things can take a while to...
Yeah.
Adopt.
The library, I think they did well all weekend. I mean, because they had the seating out front, so people would come and sit down and read and maybe partake in the art. In the evenings, like I think on Friday night, it got a little dark and the lighting sun, that great, out front.
I felt like the way of the three, the way that the library and the downtown organization teamed up and did that one, I thought that would have the most, or hypothetically could have the most like repeat success, once people like catch wind, like people with families with kids catch wind, like, oh, maybe the story changes every two weeks. This is something to do every Saturday, or like, and go downtown, and it's just one more thing to entertain the kids, and then end up the library, maybe there's snacks, and they can meet up with other families. Of course, the bike lane wouldn't, if it was to repeat, wouldn't have a station with people greeting you at the end of it, every time with a poster and interactive board. It would just be a bike lane, which would be great. Like I've said before, I, I think other streets might be in need a bit more, but Flat Street is maybe the most feasible, and that's why they chose that. And I like the idea of that alley becoming like a public destination, but I kind of didn't really see that so much with their, their effort that weekend. It was nice seeing art on the wall, but that was kind of the extent of it.
Yeah.
Some nice lights, yeah.
Did you have some feedback? Jessica has run place making, creative place making workshops, so.
Yeah, I just, I, I thought it was maybe, it was just such a small selection of projects, and it was such a short time period for them to be part, that I don't think, I don't think we really made a big impact or were able to gather as much info as we could have. And I think, yeah, I was there for Saturday for the tabling, and I stayed there for, for 45 minutes, helped blow up some balloons, but nobody came in, and...
Where was this?
At the Lajus. And, yeah, it, it wasn't a super welcoming, or interactive, or creative, or engaging space to be in.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I mean, the more, the more engaging spaces were for the charette. It really was supposed to kind of just be a directional thing, but I think it was probably a missed opportunity, though, for sure.
Just, and, and the people that I encountered on Saturday, I took my daughter and we walked up and down Main Street to see all the different projects, and, and people were curious about them, but they, they didn't know how to figure out what, what it was all about, or why there was a book page in the blender, or, so it's the, I guess, the branding of the project, the sort of message about what all these little pieces were, even the alley within sight. I know they did, they had like more of an event on Friday night, is that true? Kind of, no, okay. Yeah, but, yeah, it was, it was hard. I ran into a lot of people at the library that were like, this is so cool! And they had no idea that it was part of a bigger thing. I thought it was just something fun the library was doing.
Yeah. No, I agree with that, which is why I also think like having tables at the different places to have some interaction would have been better, so. Learned a lot about that. So, the charette.
Which I missed.
The charette did not have great attendance throughout. I think the most of an audience we had was at the recap meeting that was down at the museum. The Saturday event, which was the Drop-In Studio, was awesome, but probably one of the least attended, but the people that came actually came to sit down with the landscape architects and address certain things. So, it was, it was a great opportunity. But that definitely, again, 118, I love the space of 118 Elliott, it's really flexible and it's easy, but the activity on Saturday to draw people in at 118 Elliott Street isn't happening at that end of Elliott Street. And Andrew and I brought flyers over to High Rise, because we know that the residents there have some challenges of walking in the downtown, and not one person came over. Whether they got them or not, it's a locked place, we dropped them off. So, that was kind of unfortunate, but for the people that did come, I think it was really worthwhile. Friday night, lots of people stopped in. That was kind of the art-focused evening of what kind of public art do you want to see? Do you have suggestions for locations? So, we got, you know, information out of that. And then, so there were more kind of photo preference services. There was photo preference on Friday night, there was also photo preference stuff going on on Saturday. And our consultant, Brandy, has actually turned that into another survey, an online survey that people can do, and we haven't printed out copies yet, but it's, it's kind of the photo preference to kind of pick up and get more feedback.
I like that survey.
Yeah. Yeah. We ended up, the first survey that went out, we have probably around 550 responses to that one. The last, I spoke to Brandy late last week, we had about 100 on the photo preference survey.
500, that's really good.
Does that include the ones we got from Groundworks and...
That's, I'm including the ones we did.
Girls Club?
Boys and Girls Club, I had it. Groundworks had it. We still get people that come in our office and fill it out and put it in the box, so.
Great.
Yeah. Did you guys have observations on the charette work?
I definitely wish we had more time and money, you know, and more anticipation, you know, but that's always the, the case. I think the attendance was good for, you know, a Brattleboro event. I don't think we should be discouraged or bummed about the numbers at all. You know, I think it is what it is, you know.
I really liked, I participated in one of the walks, and that was just really interesting to hear different ideas.
Oh, yeah, that's, sorry, the walking talks.
Yeah, the walk was talks.
Walk talks, yeah.
Was that good?
It was really good, yeah. I went to the one that was like in the northern end of town.
Yeah.
It was, yeah. Just made me think about things that had...
Where'd that go through? Some of those parking lots along the river and your comment?
Yeah. It started up in the municipal center and went to like High Grove and down behind the...
Rec Center.
Rec Center, yeah.
How was the attendance on that?
Not much, but, you know, everyone there was engaged. There was a, there was somebody on every walk.
Yeah. At least one or two people.
I tried to find you guys, but I couldn't find you.
Oh, well, we were, you know, it changed throughout, that you had, you know, we started in the north and kind of midway south.
Yeah, no, I had the schedule, and I...
Oh, just finding us? I know, we were small, so.
So, Felicity, how's the survey results? How are they going to get processed or shared with us?
They're, they will be shared with us, and one of the next steps that we're going to talk about is the final report, and Brandy and I were actually talking about how she can, ways that she might be able to incorporate those into the final report, because we're going to talk about a graphic way to possibly do it. One of the things that, despite efforts, there was like zero youth participation, and that was pretty discouraging. I tried to get the information in, at least the survey, even the youth participation in the surveys has been really low. So, I met last week with Jack Clark. She works for the Brattleboro Area Prevention Coalition, and she actually staffs, co-staffs two clubs at the high school. Cool. One which will probably definitely be going to and doing some work with them, you know, kind of maybe something that had gone on at the charette. And then, the other one who they're going to think about a little bit more, so try to make some inroads in with the youth, because it's definitely, definitely missing voice in this. So, that will be good. Maybe it'll lead to a couple of other things. Jack is also, in her work doing, working, I think, she's working with a group, and they're going to be doing a survey about where people hang out in the downtown, and where they go with their families, where do they go with their friends, where are the places they avoid? And we talked about, she's hoping to get this together in the next month or so, and then maybe having the high school students come present to the planning commission in January or February with their findings. So, that would be great.
So, process-wise, how do we, what is our role in taking the consultant's report, this presentation by the young people, like how, how is that going to become a downtown?
So, the consultants basically took all that work, they're going back, they're doing some more design work and kind of thinking about it. The plan that they put together will be a draft that will come to the planning commission so that we have an, have an input and can ask them to revise areas or whatnot. Brandy and I talked, I thought it was too soon for her to come tonight to a meeting, but she will be here in December, so we can talk about survey results and have all that information as we move forward. They were viewing it as needing a couple of months to put the plan together, and she understood that we wanted a little bit more outreach, so.
And that'll, that'll look like, that'll look like sort of like the master plan with big goals, and then how to, the strategies of initiatives?
Yeah, implementation, yes. And so, the next question, and the next thing on the agenda is, what do we want it to look like? When they proposed the, when they put in a proposal for the project, they, it was left a little open. We could do a poster, we could have a traditional document, and then there's another suggestion, which is a story half, which would be... And so the next question and the next thing on the agenda is, what do we want it to look like? When they proposed the, when they, um, put in a proposal for the project, they, it was left a little open. We could do a poster, we could have a traditional document. Um, and then there's another suggestion, um, which is a story map, which would be, do you know story maps?
Yeah.
Andrew, if you want.
Yeah, so, um, I'm not sure, are you guys familiar with ArcGIS Online?
Oh.
ArcGIS. ArcGIS Esri is a platform where you can make story maps. I made one when I was in my academic career. Um, it's basically a, it involves, it's, a lot of it's mostly visual representation, what we're trying to talk about, but obviously text can be included. Um, but it's, it's a, most, it's an online format, so that's one thing we'll also need to really consider, is, you know, the accessibility of this. You can't make them into PDFs, but, um, you would be, that takes a lot of work itself too, cause it's, the format has to be changed and played with and. Uh, but it could be a really cool way of representing the information that we collected, the consultants collected. Um, and it's, it's a creative way of doing things and it's, um, it's fun, that's kind of how I think about it. I mean, Kathy, are you familiar with the tutti, anything you can pipe in?
Yeah, I mean, when I was thinking, you know, when I was thinking about how, like what format to present it in, that's kind of what, you know, you're sort of having that ability, like an interactive thing. Where you could kind of look at downtown from different points of view, or maybe see if there are different scenarios, right, or different.
Yeah, like, you know, you, kind of what Alice think is that you can have this whole map of downtown and then you can zoom into different areas. You know, to different parts of town and talks about, you know, specific place making activities or, um, pedestrian, you know, what, what kind of public, what do we want the public space to look like? Um, like, uh, you know, the waterfront, for example, off of Depot Street, what could be there, what's the possibilities? Um, what could it look like, you know, with, when, when the new bridge goes in and that whole area changes, you know? To have, be able to show those different scenarios in a visual and, again, creative way, it could be a something.
So is it like some GIS maps I've seen where there's all sorts of, there's like a column on the left and all sorts of overlays you can?
Not, not, not exactly like traditional.
I'm gonna show you.
Yes, here we go, this is, yeah.
And this is just, um, Brandy had sent me a couple of different ones just to get an idea, let's see.
There's so many ways of doing them, which is.
Um, so the first couple ones she sends.
I guess you don't need to see.
I can see, yeah.
Um, you know, approaching the recommendations in a similar format to these, um, so anyway, they're, they're. So this is a waterfront walkway. It's very graphic. So you can have kind of the background information about the area.
And there's kind of like a pathway through it, right, in terms of the way that it's structured, so you're controlling the narrative of.
Yeah.
Okay, so there you go, so.
Thanks.
So they're talking about a trail here. So you are, you know, in this case they are using the map. It's just, you know, it is, again, it's, it's all online, you don't need a special program to run it, um, but you do need a computer.
Yes.
So I guess that my one concern is there some way to do a story map online and then also kind of have a.
So this is an implementation section. Um, we had talked about having like an executive summary or some sort of smaller document that would accompany it.
Yeah, okay.
Just trying to see. So it kind of highlights the different areas and, you know, what was done. This is just, let me see if I can pull up another example.
So who maintains this then?
Who maintains it, well, it would be, it wouldn't be a changing document, I mean, it would, it would live on the town website.
Oh, so people can't go, cause your sense of the, like adding things or whatever.
Well, I mean, I mean, I guess the, I mean, so obviously Brandy, um, Brandy's gonna be creating it. You can, you're talking about editing it, like.
Yeah, so the general public can't go in and do anything with it?
Uh, no, they have their one, no, 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 yeah.
I thought you were saying that people could go in and like change.
Brandy did not.
Oh, no.
She never did, it's game like that, that would be really cool.
Like Lego blocks.
Yeah, these were just ones she sent me to kind of, you know, to take a look at.
So what's the, um. Uh, okay.
You know, these are some of the issues we're dealing with, sorry.
Who, who is the audience presence and, um, how or why are they using it?
It was the point.
Yeah.
So, so the audience is, um, local, you know, it's, it's the public, it's, um. Local government officials, it's, you know, people that work for the town, um, if we're writing grants and, you know, just kind of, it's to move, it could be the downtown Brattleboro. Um, alliance, the DBA, it's, it could help guide, um, infrastructure projects in the downtown or.
Economic development.
Yep.
So, so like to keep people, to like monitor projects, like.
Not to monitor projects, to put forth the projects that I would wanna see, you know, put forth, put forth projects to kind of get the downtown that we envision that, that we have. Come up with this comment.
I could see it being useful in the sense that like when we're building a bridge going across the river, like just to keep people, you know, up to date on dates or whatever, so that, you know, it's.
It's not meant for that, I mean, it's, think of your town plan, think about it.
It's like a sub-area plan to the, to the town plan, thinking of like, you know, it's just, it's downtown.
It's more visual town.
Yeah, cause you mean, the town plan talked about creating a downtown plan, this is kind of, so, you know, we're in a way implementing that, but then here, we're implementing many things, you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's setting forth projects or changes that we wanna see in the downtown, whether it's we want wider sidewalks on Main Street, or we want better sidewalks. Or we want more street trees, um, you know, we'll see what comes out of that.
So it could be something that. I'm just, I'm having a little trouble thinking about how it would be, how it would be used and how people would engage with it. Um, so the planning department or, or of works, if they're gonna redo the sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they would refer to this.
Yeah.
When, I don't know if they have to pitch projects to the select board, but if they're doing a big change, maybe.
Yeah.
They would bring this along with them and have a nice, beautiful presentation to.
To say, look, we voted for this.
We voted for this, this is part of our.
Or there's support for this, yeah.
How do they get that on this though?
Well, that's what we've been doing with all the, it's not, they're, like, different departments aren't putting projects on there per se. Um, it's more, it's more of a public, a public process of what does the public wanna see in, in downtown?
And then we're gonna, it's gonna result in a recommended master plan, right?
Right.
That we vote on ultimately in the select board.
Yes. We'll take it to the senate, hopefully they'll vote on it and, you know, it'll become kind of. A guiding guideline for decisions.
Yeah.
So it's just a town plan with.
It is, it's just.
It's an.
Yeah, I get it, it's in its core.
Yeah, no, which I'm totally fine with that, that's awesome.
That's what I wanna play.
Visuals, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Is the goal in making it creative and interactive and beautiful and visual and online?
Yeah.
Is the goal engaging more people in the implementation of it? Or is it just to have a tool internally for the town?
So.
I think it's both, it's both, I mean, so.
And then, and then, if it's, if the engagement piece is part of it, then is there some kind of call to action or conversion? Where we can get people engaged through this piece in.
That's a, that's a good point, so if somebody looks at this and they're like, I'm really inspired and I wanna know how I can help, you know, how will they know what to do?
To tag on to that, I wonder if, if we can know, like, what sort of format would be the most persuasive to the. Implementers, the builders, the people who cut the checks, or, you know, who have control of the public versebook or whatever phrases.
Yeah.
That's the public.
I know, but, I mean, sometimes to implement, to go from plans and to, to the next step, there's like requirements for the, the format or the content that's in it, right?
Not really for, for that kind of thing, I mean, there's, you know, funding. The big, usually one of the biggest challenges to implementing is funding. This is another one that I have up that incorporates video that was taken through their process, so that's something that, you know, we've worked with BC2B to record some of the events, so something like that can.
It's a different town.
Incorporate it. Yeah.
Can you click, can you click through it?
So you can embed videos.
As you can see, Canada's real, they like using their story maps.
That's not a real series.
That is a vision.
Yeah, so they go through their engagement process.
It's pretty.
So this is one that, um, she pointed out as liking the format of, and can see something like that, so. I'm just trying to get to the. I think, I think it's a nice idea, I, I, as long as at least we can have something that can be for people who don't have access to online. And can still give them at least the, the message. And I, I like, um, I like the suggestion of having a really clear call to action for people who find it. If it's something we can figure out, if Brandy could suggest how to do that, it'd be, it'd be nice to have that in there.
I like it, cause there's like, if Brattleboro had something similar to this, it would make us look like more techie and advanced.
Well, it's one of those interesting things, like, you know, usually we sit here at a, at a, um, planning commission meeting and you're all on your laptops or whatever. Cause we've kind of moved to the, let's not print so many copies of things, so there's that benefit to it. Um, this is, so with a story map, Jessica, this would get to your current question about the survey. Um, because there were lots of questions targeted at different parks and whatnot. Um, she, she's thinking that she could actually kind of create some maps with pins on it and you could click on it to see what respondents said about the various places. So it kind of takes that survey result and puts it right on a map, which sounded attractive.
That would be cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do we need an action from us in this kind of agenda item, or is it just sort of getting some general feedback to direct Brandy?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, you know, I, I think she'd like to know what format we would want it in, so some sort of clear. You know, I don't know if you need to take a vote, but, you know, I'd hate for her to get into one of these story maps and then all of a sudden we're like, no, you know? But I think she is okay with the story map and kind of an executive summary or a couple of page handout.
And who's, who's guiding the artistic direction of it, is she?
She is in her team.
Yeah.
So all the different formats, um, conceivably have as much content? And actual, you know, ideas proposed and things figured out, but they're just in different formats? Or like, if we choose posters, that kind of have a lot less.
I think a poster will have a lot less, I think that.
Yeah.
You have to.
It gives so much information on a story map.
Yeah, I mean, we did get.
It's so accessible to people that are using the downtown.
Yeah, people may feel daunted by a hundred-page document.
Um, we have a poster hanging in the office that the state of Vermont did with their Vermont Downtown Action Team that came around. Um, you miss all the background information that you could put on a story map or that you could put on, um, in a document. But it's a good visual of future projects.
I have never seen it.
You haven't seen it?
I've been on the, like, you know what I mean, like a poster occupies one spot in time. And this story map, like, you know, a hundred people could be looking at it simultaneously all over the place. I just feel like in terms of like accessing the information, um, something like this makes more sense. If, you know, if Brandy's willing, it would be great to have a story map of an executive summary and a poster, but, you know, like, I don't know.
Well, what if we did a story map and just a poster?
Like a one-page?
Poster, and then we have, then we have a PDF of it.
Here's an example of a poster, of our V-Dot poster. I'm more concerned about like, do we need to archive that information somehow if it's only kind of in a story map? I mean, the poster would sort of.
There is a way you can archive story maps, I've tried.
Yeah.
Is there a way you can summarize this in many fewer words?
In fewer words?
Well, so there's your map, kind of of the, okay, so they were suggesting, let's see. Okay, so this Harmony Lot here, so a potential, um, open space, a parking and event space here. Um, potential infill on, oh, it might be where the snow block is. Yeah, potential infill development here. Future conversion of a bridge to pedestrians, bike-only pathway here, so this is Bridge Street waterfront park area. So it's a lot of similar things that we're dealing with in our downtown plan too, actually. At this point, there is an idea for a cultural campus, uh, down off Newton and New Theater where NACA could potentially come here and Music Center was gonna go. Where the CF Church Building is, so, you know, some of those organizations make different decisions. Um, but this is, you know, like, the idea of a poster, and it is, it's like a three by four, we have one in the office, so. I think there's more information that can be shared with a story map or with a document, but.
Also to consolidate it down to like one page, we can have it say, go to the Brattleboro website to find out more information, you know, like.
Yes.
Specifically, instead of cramming that much in information. One thing, if, if we're trying to do a handout too, if that's the, the goal of all of this, cause I really like the idea, you know, of the, what is it called?
Story map.
Story map.
I do like having one, um, somewhat like this visual of the whole area that, that people can look at and be like, wow, look at all these. Um, these new proposals of ways to add vitality. And then they can go to a story map or something to, to delve deeper, but something to really put people on. Posters that can be put around or a simple one-page story of email that will show that. I feel, I feel like with a story map, it's, I mean, it's, it's attractive, but it's, it seems a little overwhelming, like you don't know if you're seeing it all. There's all these different paths to take in different towns.
There are, that's a good way to put it, there are different paths to take, I mean, I think you can create it as simple or as, you know. It's, if we do story map, that's a good thing to think about.
Like, what story do you wanna take, the bike ped story of Brattleboro's feature, or the public art story, or the?
Choose your own adventure.
Choose your own adventure.
Yeah, and I was thinking, like, is there, does she have to, if she's gonna make a story map, does she storyboard it in a certain way? And is there, like, how do we, how do we, um, iterate it, or can we, right? Like, does she present it to us in a way where we can comment on it and then she?
Can you speak to that, I'm not creating a story map, but Andrew has.
Well, I mean, there, I mean, there has to be, I mean.
You have to have a plan of how you're gonna.
Yeah.
Like.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm, we're thinking is that, you know, when she came to us in, what, January, February with the draft, potential draft one? I'm not sure how many, um, do you know how many drafts she plans on making or whatever?
No, but maybe it could be sooner in December if.
Well, maybe she, was she, instead of putting all the information in there, she could just have placeholders, you know? Um, and then just with a general idea of what it could look like, a vision, and then we can give her input and then it can evolve into whatever it can be. I mean, you can say it as you go, it's not like, you know, it's like publish, you're not publishing until you publish it, so.
I think the, you know, a hundred, two hundred page PDF comprehensive document has been done many times.
Yeah, true.
I don't think any of us are throwing in our, our ticket to the hat for that. Right? Let's do something a little.
Something new.
You don't wanna.
Unless it comes with a metal binder, a metal plastic.
I mean, if it's, yeah, and if it's not required by any implementers to have some sort of standard document, then let's go with one example.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jessica.
I was just wondering, I mean, back to, I was gonna take it back to the conversion. I was just wondering, I mean, back to, I was going to take it back to the conversion idea. Do you want? Just your comments on this?
So I was just, you know, it's like having the online presence, I feel like might serve other purposes that where a book or a poster wouldn't, like the call to action or, you know, and helping people understand like what Bradler Borough looks like a little bit or something like, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I'm a big fan of the like, the poster idea. I just, like, when I visit a community, I love seeing like, seeing that out in the community and seeing where where things are going and why I would ever want to come back. But, yeah, back to that that call to action thing. With the plan, have implementers been identified and is there, is there action or ways?
There will be. Yeah.
There will be.
That might, once there's, you know, so it's going to come in phases, obviously, because it's going to be expensive to implement it. So maybe that, when there's a specific project that's going to be getting underway, maybe that would lend itself to a poster then. This is part of a bigger plan and, you know, because a lot of this will take a long time to accomplish.
Or more specifically, instead of a bigger plan, like a more specific thing to.
Yeah, like, like, let's say press, something happens with the Preston Lot first, so then there's a poster about the Preston Lot. Be in the context of the of the master plan, but it really would be focused on that one thing that was starting to happen first.
Well, I think, I know when I was, my, so my past senior year, we actually, my senior planning studio was a downtown plan. And we looked at catalyst sites to really spark implementation.
What sites?
Catalyst, catalyst.
Oh, catalyst.
Yeah, and kind of going off what you were saying, Prudence, is that you focus on those certain sites of what could be there. And that's kind of how we made our final plan, was focusing around six sites. And that kind of led the way for what the future could look like for the downtown I was planning for, we were planning for. But I think that that kind of helps put you in the direction that what I realized, at least. I mean, I think it's okay to talk about everything, but I think when you talk, when it goes specifics, people actually can see what it could potentially look like. Wrap their head around it.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if in it she, you know, based on the information she's gotten, is there, is there like an actionable list? Or is there like a, you know, like what are the next steps things in terms of? I mean, you could, I like the frames of thinking like, here's, take the pedestrian view, take the art view, take. So there's something intriguing about that, but it's also like, you know, there could be a framework for how you move, how you implement the plan. And whether that's like, starting from catalysts or starting from.
We also, you know, phase it too.
Particular.
You know, a phase plan.
Yeah.
You know, five years, ten years, twenty years out. I mean, that's very common, the planning practice. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Or like a list of priorities.
Yeah, priority list.
Like, what is the thing that she heard the most often? Yeah, I'm really curious to know what that is, like what she heard over and over again.
Are there things we can learn from the the two, at least that I know of, past neighborhood plans? You know, the West Bradleboro Plan and the Putney Road Plan. Of over those, like ten, fifteen years ago or something, right?
So the West Bradleboro Plan was two thousand seven, two thousand eight. And that one is kind of had a lot of photo preference type stuff, which then got translated into the zoning districts and the building design guidelines. So we haven't really seen a lot of development out in West Bradleboro. It's a little constrained with the flood plain. So I would say. Yeah, but but we use that plan. Most recently, the state's looking at resurfacing Route Nine and we said, well, they would have had a bike lane in the sidewalks or, you know, bike lane actually, because there's some challenges to sidewalks out there. So that's kind of how that plan is. There weren't really major projects there. I, there was a, you know, there is a desire for green in West Bradleboro, but there, that's not moved forward and a lot, the right way is the state of Vermont, so it's kind of been a challenge. The Putney Road, the Putney Road Master Plan is an interesting plan and it really involves massive population growth.
Right, yeah, it kind of was hinged on, yeah, on a massive flux of people coming here and money and.
Wait, did that not happen?
I wonder if there's a way, I mean, any proposal is, or, you know, individual specific proposals in the plan are, is subjective in terms of if it's achievable or conservative or bold, but I wonder if we should set the overall theme or not theme, but like tone, you know, it's like, hey, let's just just propose achieve easily achievable things. Or just propose the biggest boldest things that excite everyone. But then it's like, is that, are any of those going to happen?
I think easy goals.
Yeah.
I think. I mean, I think some of the stuff that you might see, so I know at the closing meeting, there was a lot of discussion about sidewalk width or bike lanes on Main Street.
Yeah, that was nice. They proposed.
You know, that kind of thing. So I think, you know, those are, it could be a really bold idea to get rid of some parking on Main Street and widen the sidewalk. So I think that, but then there's going to be stuff that will probably be recommended for Bridge Street or the waterfront, which we know that area is changing. I mean, that is kind of our catalyst site because we know that the Hinsdale Bridge is going to move and that's going to change that. The way that is, so I know things we can do to make that.
Yeah, I I do like the format of where there's like a a big bolt proposal made, but then also more easily achievable one. Because then people are like, oh, wow, they get inspired. And I'm like, well, you know, this is reality. So and then they're like, oh, and look, in reality, there's this easily achievable minor change. And then they might make that easier to happen.
It's like a good cup.
By having the radical thing, yeah, or Malcolm X Martin Luther King. I heard that analogy, I'm a scholar of it.
All right. So am I hearing a kind of consensus around? You're intrigued by the story map. You like that direction rather than just a, you know, hundred page paper document. So I'm not sure I'm getting a consensus on whether it's an executive summary or a poster to kind of follow, you know, to accompany it. But maybe I can have more conversation with Brandy about that too.
I would love to see one, one image that tries to encapsulate everything. I mean, without detail, of course, because it can't be detailed, but.
Definitely for the folks that aren't, don't have access to the internet as easily as some others, definitely need a some sort of printout, but it'd be awesome to keep it small and minimal.
Another option could be having a map station that's like laminated outside, that's big, like, you can use other towns have them, places like malls have them, like you are here and it shows like where the rest of the areas like around that spot, or they could be like as big as like five by five.
You can put a guy in glass.
Yeah, or like glass.
Exactly. Now, the Commonwealth has those like window displays that they never use. There there used to be like books inside them and now they're just empty. I just think it's sweet stuff for a map of Bradleboro. Like, you are here, man.
Yeah.
And I think I would also, just some some step or two in the iteration of it to like check in. I mean, I think it's, it's partly a little hard to get in your head around like what it can look like, so I feel like that'll help.
Maybe we can do that one in December.
Yeah, if we can definitely see aesthetics before she gets too far into it.
It's exciting. All right. So next on our agenda is sustainability coordinator update.
Actually, there is one more additional outreach.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you.
So I talked about our plan to try to engage more youth. We also talked about, we didn't really feel like we had got enough feedback from the business community. So going to try to figure that out. I mean, we had worked with D D A and and did a morning, one of their merchants meetings, but it was poorly attended. It was the Tuesday after Labor Day. So we need to do some more outreach, whether it's just face to face and stopping in the stores and having discussions with them, but we do need more.
Because of how.
Do you need support on that? Do you have a?
We don't have a plan yet for that.
For the business. The business, sorry. I definitely think we need to go door to door to the business community, especially for now strapped in there and have no time.
Yeah.
Yeah, to get any information on them. We need to see them at their their places of business.
I agree. I agree.
And I, you know, I don't need to, because I have plenty to do, but I would go with whoever wants to do that. I'll volunteer to do that if if need be. Someone else would rather do it, I would definitely pass it off, so.
We'll let you know when we're planning that way if any of it is available and needs to come.
Thanks. So still sustainability coordinator update?
Yeah, so Felicity just asked that this be on the agenda because we've all had an interest in supporting the position. So the town is in reviewing the, you know, we're we're in the process. Still, we had an overwhelming response of applications and it was pretty amazing. Now we're down to an interview phase. Hopefully, I think in the next month or so.
Do you know how many people applied?
I believe it was seventy four applications.
That's great.
There may have been more that came in after.
All right. And then potential land use regulation amendments?
Yeah, so we still had, yeah, so now we're waiting for the Congress for new optimism to give us some feedback, but we've had a couple of other things come up and we wanted to come back to the industrial zoning district discussion. We seemingly had a lot of requests for shipping containers to, for people to put them in their yards for storage. It's a new thing and we, we don't have clear guidance in the land use regulations.
You had, wait, say that again. You had many requests.
Yeah.
Can I look, can I use your computer for a second?
Are they converting them into homes? They're not, no, they're just for storage. Somebody is selling them in town apparently. Yes, we view them as different than sheds.
Like storage purposes?
Well, sheds are.
Sheds, I mean sheds, yeah, yeah, or other, like cargo containers, you know, those. So this is some, you'll see is a draft of.
What I want to find is a.
Do you have your question?
Wait, which is the blue or the black?
The red. Blue underlined.
So we haven't, we haven't addressed shipping containers as a accessory structure. I do know that they get used for housing and we probably have less of an issue with that as opposed to using it as a storage container in the residential areas. So we have, the interpretation has kind of been that if you were allowed to have mini storage in a district, then we would allow a storage container. So that would open up the service center, the industrial zoning district. You know, that that we have less of a problem with than in the mixed use area, which is smaller lots, smaller buildings, kind of more dense development. Same with the neighborhood center and the residential neighborhood. So we've had some requests in the residential neighborhoods. We do allow them for temporary storage, so if you're undergoing renovations in your house and you want to put one in to store your stuff, we would say, yes, we'd give you a temporary permit. But right now, we're of the opinion that they should not be allowed for permanent storage in the residential neighborhood districts.
Right now, we're of the opinion as in we're not.
We isn't staff. We have not, it's been our interpretation of the zoning that you couldn't have it in the residential neighborhood in the mixed.
So it hasn't, I don't know why when you, I was assuming it was residential, people asking to have these for storage containers, but it sounds like their requests come from like businesses or like industrial uses or something.
Well, no, I mean, somebody wanted to have one on their residential property.
They're way structurally sound and affordable way to store stuff.
Like a shed.
Yeah.
They last like two hundred and fifty years, almost to forty.
Well, I didn't even thought about asking for that with the residential, so.
You had thought about.
I hadn't asked yet, but I probably was going to.
Well, I mean, that's what we're here to discuss. This is kind of our interpretation of the planning commission feels differently. That's why, you know, I mean, maybe, you know, maybe with some buffering and, you know, maybe they could be acceptable or maybe you don't feel they need to be buffered.
What do?
I mean, I like this, this point about it must be screened from view. Says just the front property line.
But that's not for residential though.
Right, right.
Yeah, the way that that we've drafted it is it would not be allowed. It would, so it'd be service center.
An industrial. Not commercial, because I know a couple of commercial spots with them.
Service centers. But there are some that have them, so what is it? Is it Coda and Coda up on Putney Road? They have one. The dealership on Canal Street has one, but those are all pre insisted under the old land use regulations.
How often do we see other small town USA of like twelve thousand residents dealing with shipping containers as storage units? Like, have we done any research on what other towns, you know?
I wasn't, the jurisdictions I did research on, I, I'm not sure what their population was. So that's something we can look into, you know, if you want to get some numbers and an idea, yeah.
Andrew, what were you seeing in terms of where were towns permitted of them? Were they?
They were allowing them, but usually it wasn't on residential property. If it was residential, it was a temporary thing, like during a construction project or, you know, some sort of addition, something like that. But usually it was commercial district or industrial.
And so the main reason for that is the aesthetics?
Well, that's one. And then, you know, public health and just, you know, kind of think back why there's zoning, you know, land use, you know.
Yeah, they're people's view.
Yeah, and I think some communities there, you know, also land use plays a role. Yeah, but I mean, obviously, I, I mean, if I was a property owner, I'm not sure if I'd want this.
But someone, someone can build a shed of the same size that's ugly, right?
Yeah.
That's true.
I've got one.
All right.
Well, what's the typical, what's the typical size of the storage, a shipping container?
Well, six feet is usually max. And I think.
They're tall, a lot of.
Ten by twenty or ten by forty or two standard sizes.
Well, I, from what I saw, they want to allow them to be more than six.
It says not more than six feet on here, but they're like eight feet tall.
Yeah, so I think the ones that they were thinking about are smaller storage. So like, I mean, if we were looking at industrial, maybe we could look at expanding it a little more.
Typical size.
The appropriate typical size.
How, how many requests have we had?
We've had two or three, something recently.
In the year, in two thousand nineteen or?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so maybe more before that.
Well, the people who ask are a small percentage of the people who want to do it. Right? That's what the teacher's always said in class, right? They're like, all right, there's no.
I'm just curious to see like if this is like actually a big deal for people, you know, like if it's a, if it's, because this is exciting, especially when it comes to how we have such minimal space already, you know, like and what storage can do is free up living space. You know, so if we can free up living space, then we can meet other needs all at the same time. So what some people consider an eyesore isn't an eyesore for everybody. Like, I don't think, I don't think storage containers are ugly, but they're definitely not pretty.
Utilitarian.
But if they're screened?
From the front.
Would you want them screened just from the front or do you think they should be screened from abutting properties as well? Like, should they be screened all around?
What are?
And are you gonna scream and screen them with ARBRA ID because I can't stand them?
What are our chicken coop rules?
Our chicken coops need to be fifty feet from the nearest structure. And they need to, no roosters if you're in the residential.
How much, how far from the property line?
Yeah, how far?
There's a.
Neighborhood property.
I don't, I don't think there's a property line.
Are you playing that?
I'm trying to find.
I think it is.
I think it's fifty feet from. Some chicken is not in there. What do we call it?
Fowl.
Fowl storing on an adjacent property.
Oh, okay, there we go.
I got it.
You got it. So you can have a rent at the end of your house. You gotta be far away from it.
Yeah, but that also has noise and smell.
Yeah, that's true.
This doesn't. I can see a lot farther than fifty two.
You definitely. What about, for instance, you're allowed to have animals, like livestock in Bedro if you get permission from your neighbors.
No, that's not.
Is that not true? Is that an old thing?
It's conditional use approval. Yeah, we don't do anything where if your neighbor say you can do it, it's okay.
Okay, gotcha. Cool. We don't even do that with this either.
So shipping containers are, I mean, they're pretty, okay, they're not, but they're unattractive, but they're cheap and very available, right? So they become.
Is there also somebody in town that's selling them?
That's what we've heard.
So it's a, a local business that's providing as well. Seems like another good reason.
Interesting.
Well, the shipping industry is in such fluctuation right now that all these containers are flooding the market. They're just like super cheap right now.
Is that, is that what's going on?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're cheaper than a shed at Home Depot. You could be buying a shed at Home Depot that's like six by eight, or you could buy a shipping container that's much bigger for the same money and less homeowners.
That's why I was looking at it.
Yeah, I think there is a concern in terms of the appearance of them.
So are you, we've been, like, we've had these kind of iterate up, these various changes. Do you need a vote from us at this moment or is this kind of like?
No, there's other things, like. Yeah, there's other things. This was one that we wanted to present to you. We don't need a vote at this time, so if you want to think about it or, you know, yeah, we don't need a vote tonight.
And then TRB asked us about this.
No, it's just something we're seeing in the office.
You're getting interested.
That right now, we don't have, we've got an interpretation of our land use regulations, but there's no clear language.
Could a veil be defined as a mural?
Could a, I'm sorry, could a what?
You said that it may be screened, yeah, with a veil. Could that be defined with mural?
I think what we, if we look at our definition, I think it's what fence or vegetation.
You're right. If we're, if you're looking at what our regulations have right now, no, but it could be.
Tweak.
You know, it could be tweaked if we were.
Yeah.
We don't have to use the word screened. We could say it could be screened or painted or made artistic.
I'll go like a little personal with it since I, I've seen an interest in it. I, if I were to put one on my property, I would have it, I would follow the shed rules and then it would follow the shed rules about placement if I were asked to do this. And I would also cover it in a way to screen it and make it really look like a shed when you're, you know, looking at it. But that it would be a shipping container on the inside. And that would be more economical for me than to actually go to Home Depot and buy a shed. So I don't, you know, I mean, if this is just me as like a single person, I, I feel like that would be reasonable if it looked that way for my neighbors. And if my neighbor did the same thing, I would, I would be like, yeah, that's fine. But it, it seems like the interest you've gotten is in non residential districts. If I'm understanding by your recommendation, it's, it was, you've got service center and industrial interests. And it could be that maybe we approach that, you know, think about that first.
So we had interest originally in the mixed use zoning districts, so in that rural area in between the hospital and the price shop area, right, so along there. Originally, we had interest there, then we had it in a residential neighborhood. And then we did have one in the service center. In the service center, we said, we do allow mini storage in the service center, so it was associated with a commercial business. We said, okay, there. We did say no on the other two because that's not districts where storage, mini storage is allowed. And, you know, we weren't thinking that it was like a shed or, I mean, it is an accessory structure though to, to a primary structure, so it is providing storage like a shed would.
And that's the section we thought would be most appropriate to include it into is the accessory structures. I know me and Brian, you know, discussed other areas potentially to put it, but, you know, Sue thought, and I agree, that in the most sense, put it there. And then we could just, because then we can really talk about what zone it should be in, what are the standards? Then, you know, it could, if we thought about putting it maybe in our figure and then including it and like, you know how, I'm not sure if you looked at our land use regulations, but you know, every section has like permanent uses and conditional use chart. And we thought about just putting it in there, but we thought maybe it could be interpreted in different ways, so make it as clear as you can so everyone understands.
I really like the shed, it looks like a biting by the same, someone concerned that would be, especially folks without the resources, two billion of fence or planting greenery or anything. If you're buying a shipping container, you're on a budget. And you have a lot of stuff to store. I love the idea of pushing this through and approving it, but I feel like we should all do some research. I'm really curious to know what other towns are doing for the same exact situation.
I would, I would love to see some more information on the size. I would love to see the possibilities of doing it in residential and mixed use and what that might look like.
There might be, for the size, there might, it might be worth considering something about how it's constrained by the, you know, we have other things that constrain how much of the site footprint can be filled up. So, you know, I mentioned earlier, their size is up to like ten by forty. My per, my lot, you couldn't even get a ten by forty. So that would naturally be very constrained and, you know, for a lot of the lots in the residential urban core, they're quite small. So I, I can't remember, but I know we've got quite a bit of stuff in, in, in the document that restricts, you know, how much of the space can be taken up. And that, that might be worth figuring out, you know, how that naturally just limits what the sizes of these things could be if someone did it. And I, I do like the idea of if we were considering it for residential, you know, figuring out some sort of screening thing that would be economical. The other thing I thought about is, you know, if you think of, we have a lot of people who are renting here, I'm a homeowner, but this could be a benefit for people who are renting. If a landlord has something like this, it's economical storage, it's out of the rain, it's a place where somebody who's renting can store things as a benefit of, of being a resident in the town rather than having to pay for, you know, a separate storage place, which is, is pricey. And can be, it can be prohibitive to some, especially if they're on transportation.
I'm wondering, yeah, the consideration of like it in the rural, I just had all the zoning districts in the rural and then also in the mixed use. And then do we need to consider flood hazard overlay district and not having it there?
Those, those shipping containers can float, get taken away.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
I found, I found one.
So we have a hazard wall going to our shipping containers in our backyards.
I mean, we do have, you know, the flood, flood point overlay.
So we, right now, we, we have a definition for small accessory structures that with a floor area of two hundred square feet or less. They are permitted in the special flood hazard area. They're not permitted in the floodway, which is like the more restrictive part. So.
But would a shipping container be two hundred square feet or less?
Well, it could be if it's a ten by twenty.
Yeah.
And they do come smaller. They have, have even.
I was just, the first result that came up when I searched said that there's two standard sizes, eight by twenty and eight by forty.
Okay.
So that's hundred sixty or three hundred twenty.
Okay.
The only other thing I would say, just because it's permitted doesn't mean it wouldn't need to be elevated.
You're talking about only flood point?
In the flood.
Yeah.
Because I don't think that is exempt from.
They have to float because of all the shipping ships if they, if they capsize, then all the goods sink to the bottom of the ocean, that would suck.
Okay, so you want more information on what other towns are doing about the size? Are there options for screening that are, is economical? Want to consider allowing it in the mixed use and the residential neighborhood?
And in rural as well.
And rural, sorry.
All, like rural, essential, rural in.
The rural district.
Just the rural districts, okay, gotcha.
And then the last piece, is there any special considerations for the flood?
Okay.
Well, we can do that.
Intriguing. Sexy shipping containers. Okay, and then you also.
Sorry, just real quickly, so what is it about the zoning regs currently that don't allow, in your interpretation?
It's our interpretation that it's different than a shed. It's just got a different foundation, you know, it's constructed differently, a different roof pitch, all that. So that's going to be the interpretation.
Industrial zoning district block coverage.
Yep, do that, sure. We can have a quick conversation about it.
Well, for some reason, my thing wasn't saved to this.
By whom?
Don't know. You have, I, um.
Was that the drive?
Yeah. All right, well.
So we had talked about the log coverage.
And sorry, I have this and we can pass it around and I'll just describe it. So Sue, do you want to just kind of give the intro?
Yeah, so we were looking at the lot coverage in the service center. If you might recall, we thought it was a little low. And then we got to talking about the lot coverage in the industrial zoning district. So you had asked us to kind of figure out what was the impervious coverage in the industrial zoning district? What was the average kind of impervious zoning district? Right now, we have it at, I think it's sixty percent you're allowed to have impervious coverage. So we were trying to figure that out. Unfortunately.
Well, what I found is that for like the totals, about roughly thirty percent of the land in the industrial parcels is impervious right now.
Roughly thirty percent?
Yeah, total.
In the total.
Industrials zone, yep.
We could, we, we couldn't do a parcel by parcel basis, yeah.
Potentially tomorrow, I could fix that, but so we'll stay in touch with terms of parcel by parcel data. The reason I couldn't do is because in order to combine, I'm not sure if you guys know G I S, but basically if you want to combine a similar fielding, similar, like there's basically an attribute table that goes with that G I S data. I think it's metadata to data. And then you need to have similar field for each like impervious surface to the industrial parcels. It needs to be something that's, that would bring them together and there isn't for the data I have. Yeah, so I have to build that. So we'll get back to you on that, but so what we found is that, we've got the totals. As you can see, the northern industrial parcels have a lot more impervious surface compared to the southern end for different reasons. On the southern end, it seems like you could build more, but again, another conversation with Brian Bannon is that there's a lot of, there's some wetlands and topography issues, unfortunately, though, in those areas that are constraining industrial development.
So essentially, we're gonna have to come back to you with you, with it.
But that middle one off of Putney Road has lots of availability. I haven't been out there to that site, but.
What's it that?
Um, it's off of Putney Road. Do you know what?
The full flex field?
Okay.
Is that what you're thinking?
Thank you. This one right here, you know, here's, you know, Putney and then.
Oh. Big industrial.
Yeah, a big, big lot across from McDonald's.
Is it, that's not industrial zone.
Well, this isn't, that wasn't our industrial, our database. Unless you think that's incorrect, I can remove it.
So it's when the page expands.
So you're saying the northern lot, that is sixty percent, but we're done?
For impervious, yeah. And that includes like the building itself and then a concrete.
Because that's, is it, that's the marina?
Some type of soil and, yeah. So Brian says we can update on pervious surfaces and we can see how much is pervious, if that's helpful in any way, but just another analysis.
There you go.
Yeah.
I, I think that's incorrect. We don't have any industrial.
Gotcha. Well, let's update that G I S data.
So I, I just, I need to remind her why this came up.
So it came up because we were looking at the lot, we have lot coverage. It's, you're allowed to have sixty percent of the lot impervious in the service center zoning district. And we were running, we were finding that was too low.
That was too restrictive.
That was too restrictive and kind of didn't meet the general guidelines for what a service center zoning district would be, which should probably be, allow a higher impervious coverage. So we came up with this, we'll allow you up to seventy percent, but that ten percent, so, you know, you get the sixty, but the extra ten, you're gonna have to do that on your property so that your, your stormwater is being managed on site instead of running off into the town system or the state system. So that then brought up the discussion of, well, what about the industrial zoning districts? What are they like? So Andrew started working on that, but we've got a data issue right now that will get resolved.
Yeah, because definitely parcel by parcel is gonna get you a better idea of what's actually going on.
So what we're learning then is that the industrial zones are usually as impervious as what they should be. But it's hard to say because we're not.
Not sure.
Yeah.
I mean, impervious surfaces is a, you know, you've got to manage that stormwater if it's all running off and that's a cost that the town bears, the state bears, or, you know, the environmental degradation to the river and whatnot, so. I think that's, that's.
Yeah.
But if we apply a percentage of impervious, then that would limit development potentially of that lot.
If it's, if it's too low of an impervious. Yeah, so we used to allow up to ninety percent in the service center, so this is the Putney Road area. Well, the Crosby Brook is impaired in part because there's all this sediment running off. So then we were like, well, we've just allowed too much pavement and roof and that kind of thing. So we scaled it back to the sixty percent, but that does seem to be a challenge to meet when you're trying to, especially on a small lot, like some of the fast food restaurants are smaller lots. So the Friendly's, you know, which would ideally be redeveloped at some point, so. So that's how the whole thing kind of started.
Because of the Friendly's lot or?
Well, because we had originally been at ninety percent, then we went to sixty percent and then people would look at that lot to redevelop and it would kind of be a start of a better.
I, I wonder, there's something about pervious pavement in there as being kind of an exemption from the coverage limit, but only if it's for overflow parking and has a bunch of grass in between these spacedavers. But like, how well does, oh, I don't know if anyone knows, I haven't researched, but like a full regular looking parking lot, but made of pervious pavement, not with grass growing up in between the wheel wells and everything, but how, how well does that work to? If that.
Cement sediment run off and.
Yeah, I mean, it's supposed to take in all the water, right? That's how they advertise it.
Yeah, there's all different P M Ps and there's different levels for each like installation. So it kind of depends on, yeah, maybe on the philosophy of the soil and it depends on the. Right, whether it's maintained or not and.
So that's something where a solution could exist, but it's hard to write it into rules because there's so many variables?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, there's, I would say there's kind of a menu of options that, you know, there's places like the Own Age Stormwater Center that have done a lot of research on what's effective in our climates and.
There's no, there's no state person who judges that or permits that or?
There's permitting if there's three acres or more than pervious.
Right, and it's like one and a half. I'm about to read the whole stormwater draft. But it doesn't come into effect in our side of the state until twenty thirty-three or something, so it's like.
Evaluating pervious pavement?
Well, where there's a smaller parcel, like it's an acre and a half or something where you have to, you're gonna have to start to mitigate for your pervious surface. It doesn't hit us for like more than a decade, which is crazy.
Does Act two fifty?
We can talk stormwater somehow.
Yeah, let's talk stormwater.
Does Act two fifty play in this at all?
What's that?
Act two fifty play in this at all?
Does Act two fifty what?
Play in the best pervious. Play in the best pervious percentages at all?
I don't think so.
Not at the moment, no. Not unless like...
Sorry, I think I'm off, sorry.
It's being reviewed by the legislature right now, like it's, there's some, we're working on our second year.
All right. So, Sabah, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second half.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.